We're now going to turn to the candidates for Port Angeles City Council. The city of Port Angeles is governed by a seven-member city council. The council is responsible for setting policy, establishing the city's budget, hiring a new city manager, and serving as a legislative body for the city. Council members serve four years terms and the salary is $550 a month. All council members are elected at large as opposed to being elected by district or geographic area. There are two contested positions this year, positions five and seven, and this is where your agenda is incorrect. Michael Meredith Marilyn Smith are lying for position five. Dan Baden was chairman chair of Kid for position seven, and Mr. Baden has withdrawn from the race when he did so after the allow of the verdict, so his name is still on the ballot. And the votes that he would receive are legal votes. So his kid is acting with him leaving, and she is here this evening. The unopposed positions, we're not including in this form because according to the policy, we don't include unopposed races. So each candidate, in the order they file for office, will be given up to two minutes for their opening remarks. Following their opening remarks, I believe we'll have about 30 minutes for your questions. I'll then ask each candidate in reverse by the order to make their closing remarks up to one minute. Candidates, please watch the timers. It's always a game to you with how much time you have. So before we begin, let me remind you that we've asked the candidates to answer the following questions in their opening remarks. What are your qualifications for serving as a member of the city council? What are your primary goals for your first year in office? And how do you intend to address the key issues confronting the city of Port Angeles? In the order which they file for office, we'll begin with Chair Kid. She was born and raised in Port Angeles and attended Peninsula College. She's worked for three Fortune 500 companies, and she owns her own storage and U-Haul business in Port Angeles. She's served two terms on the Port Angeles City Council and played one term as mayor. She's acting with the Kiwanis Club and is president of the Native Services Club. Ms. Kid?
Good evening and thank you, Lincoln Women Voters, for inviting me here. I have an empty chair for my opponent because he's not here. But I have an opponent. I have someone who signed up and had 10 days to withdraw. Three months later, he refuses to campaign. He is a legal candidate. Any votes for him are legal, and if he should garner more votes, he has said he would be happy to take the seat. I'm working for this position. I'm working for the people of Port Angeles, and I am campaigning, and I do need your vote, and that's why I'm here. I am qualified to serve on the Port Angeles City Council. I'm an active involved citizen. As a council member, I have worked hard to really have transparency, much greater transparency at City Hall. I have worked from the beginning of 2008 as the chair of the Peta Forward Committee to work on, as someone who's born and raised here, why don't we fix up our waterfront? That's a project that, if you will go down and look at our new beaches, new walkways, new benches, new parks, that's been an almost eight-year project, but it started with, why can't we do this? And I have persisted, and I'm very proud of that. We have a city manager now who, I worked hard to get someone that would help have a vision for Port Angeles and be a local. We have our budget. When I first took office, we barely had 10% reserves. Now our goal is 25%, and we're over 20%. I've worked hard. I work seven days a week when it's necessary, but I'm working for the people of Port Angeles. I'm very positive of Port Angeles. Great things are happening, and I want to continue to work for you to continue our progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Michael Meredith. He's been a resident of Port Angeles for most of his life. He has a degree from Peninsula College in Fisheries. He works for a local contracting company as a self-loading block truck driver. Mr. Meredith has volunteered with the Kiwanis Club, the Dry Creek PTO, and the Port Angeles Center. Mr. Meredith, you have up to two minutes, and I think it's probably best if the video is on the tape. Mr. Meredith?
Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. Appreciate that. This is a nice facility. I decided to run several years ago and never actually put my foot into it until the time came, the opportunity was there. My wife and I decided that it was now or never. Let's go ahead and get started. I've lived here in the county for 40 years, or lived in Port Angeles for 35 years, and the city's important to me. My family lives here. My children live here. I grew up in our parks. I grew up on our waterfront. And I'd like to see our city continue to grow. We need to be increasing business, increasing opportunities for people. And in the first year, I'd like to see Lincoln Park be built with. We need to get those trees out of the way. We need to be working with the port and making it more available to farmers. The port is essential in moving goods and services out of our city, and we need to be on top of that. And there's no reason why we can't develop that park in the dingy area that it is into something vibrant. I know that the citizens have got behind Erickson Park. They've gotten behind Shane Park, and I know that they would get behind Lincoln Park. Thank you.
Next is Marilyn Smith. She's lived in Port Angeles since 1993. She's worked in law enforcement as an emergency medical technician. She's also worked in corporate management and has been an entrepreneur. Marilyn has volunteered in women's shelters, on a suicide prevention hotline, and as a consumer protection lobbyist. Ms. Smith, you have up to two minutes.
Speaking is not so very natural, so you have to bear with me. I was born in California. I lived in Reno. I also lived in Iran as a child. I was one of those kids that was... I was learning disabled. I had dyslexia, dysandalia. I went to a lot. I was always in the special ed classes. So everything I've learned, I've learned the hard way, literally. I've had to get behind it. I've had to learn. I've had to catch up. And I read a lot. I've gone to city council meetings since I was 15. I've had a real interest in city government. Since I've been up in Port Angeles, I've been going to city council meetings for 20 years. And I'm sometimes a little perplexed about how our government works here. It doesn't work like other governments. We don't have a balance between the staff and the city council as other cities have. I would really like to say... And also, I'm not seeing people coming out to the meetings. I'm not seeing us holding the other like a community. And we're a community that's on the crossroads of one road in, one road out. You know, one catastrophe, and we're all, pretty much, we're all stuck with each other. We need to become a community. I think that starts with city government and spreads out. My biggest thing is to try to get town to run like the community that I know we are. You know, I'd like to see people get involved and come out. I'd like to see plot parties. I'd like to see more downtown things. I'd like to see a lot more for the kids. At the same time, I'd like to... I kind of like to just be... I asked a lot of questions. I did a lot of research. I know we can do things better in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Next, we'll take as many questions as possible from the audience. You can direct your questions to a single member, and maybe all three of them will respond to the questions. I'm wondering if anyone had any questions. You'll have up to 30 seconds to ask your questions. Please keep your eye on the timer. They'll be given one minute to answer questions. Because we have three candidates, we're not going to do any votes. They'll have, I think they'll have one minute to respond. Sarah has the microphone to assist you, and if there's someone who can't have the microphone, there are volunteers who have the next cards and handles for you. We planned out the minutes for this, so we'll see how many questions we have. And since we have someone lined up there, I'll wait with my question below. And state your names for these.
I didn't even say your name. I wasn't going to ask a question, but I thought I'd talk about a bug who had one. Ms. Kid, you mentioned waterfront, and that just got me to thinking about my problems with other water. I'm always running on the waterfront and to the power on the pier. And for years now, it's been looking really ragged. I guess my question is, with the emphasis on the waterfront that you mentioned, why do you think it's so difficult to do that in face of, it's sort of an other face for all the visitors that come and stroll in and out of the summer? There's so much graffiti, propane, rust, just disrepair, and I've talked to Megan's kind of sound very...
Can you repeat that question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's it.
Ms. Carter, Ms. Kid?
Thank you. Wow, thanks for bringing that to my attention. I have actually been working hard to get the floats replaced on the city pier so we can get the Lady Washington back and get our boats parking on the pier. So that was my focus, and that was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we have, through rent funding, we have had budget deficits. So I will talk to our Parks Department head, and we'll focus on that. Now, on the other side of downtown, we have a small tower near our beaches, and that is looking rundown, and we were getting together a group of volunteers. But a young man who's working on his Eagle Scout project is going to paint and fix that up. So I will take that pier project to volunteers and to the scouts as well as to the city because this is the town of volunteers. We love to get in and make things happen. And maybe you can come. You and I can help paint it. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Meredith?
Well, it's like a lot of things around maintenance. Maintenance costs need to be looked at when we do things. Anytime you build something or install something, you think, how great it looks. You have to look down the road in the future, how long it's going to take to maintain that, how much money it's going to cost. There are several projects that it may cost money, more money to maintain those things 20 years down the road than it does now. I would think that the undertaking of painting that tower down there would be a stretch for a volunteer effort. That is probably something that's rather dangerous to do. It's tall, but it needs to be kept up, and it needs to be dealt with. That is, the visitors from the coast see that. They also see our downtown waterfront when they come in, which is by far better than what it was and what it will ever be. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Okay. I'm going to take it from a whole different level. You know, I really, I need to look at everything that we're doing. Have you guys...
Hold on a little bit.
A little closer? You know, maintenance needs to be planned for, and I don't see that we plan for maintenance. Our streets are falling apart. I know that they're on some bizarre cycle for street maintenance. We have sewers that are failing because they have outside my house one of the months. You know, this entire concept of maintaining the infrastructure is something that's really important for a small town, which leads back into budgets. And I think what we really need to look at is the budget and how we can save money not by cutting services, but by reallocating funds or doing some public private partnerships that will help us keep things going. So that's my good answer, because I can't run anymore.
Next question?
Hi, my name is Kim Yacklin, and this question is actually personally given. You indicated that the city's fund balance has increased from 10% to 20%. Yet you just also said there's a budget deficit, so... For I do live in the city, and our fees, whether it's water, garbage, or other services, continue to rise constantly, it seems. So have you with an increase in the fund balance? Where are you getting that money from?
Actually, we're going to continue to go in order for filing, and we'll take turns. So we'll start actually with Mr. Meredith.
It's an issue for losses now is not just the utility tax, the CSO fees on there. I hear a lot of talk, well, you know, in other cities our size, they pay more money. This is not a huge vibrant explosive economy here. Folks are already having trouble paying their bills. And in my opinion, we do need to have surplus. It will rain someday, and it's going to happen. At the same time, there is a cost to citizens. And I think we just need to be aware of increasing those costs anymore. I think the citizens are tapped. They're at the breaking point, and there are some that I've heard state that, I'm leaving, I'm moving. I'm not going to continue to pay for this. We should have dealt with it long-term. And we did, and that's a problem with a lot of things coming up that we haven't dealt with.
Ms. Smith?
We have been balancing the budget on behalf of the citizens. I mean, I kind of work, didn't keep my entire house anymore. I've got two rooms heated. I think the fees are going up ridiculously. I've been looking at fees for this town and Seattle and San Francisco and other really small towns around here, and we pay too much. However, the reason we're paying too much is a lot of really bad decisions that happened over the last 15 years that I've watched. The incubator, the property, the Nigel Properties, which was a bond that we had to get a million dollars in five years for, even though we've been paying heat on it for the last 10 years. So it would end up costing like, what, 200 million, or not, 202 million for... Sorry, learning disabilities. 2 million for a piece of property that is, frankly, I don't think it's worth it. It's the Capital Donuts, Heckman Motors, and the glass building studio. That's not a 2 million dollar apartment, but that's okay.
Ms. Kid?
It's important for all of us that we have reserves. It's very important for the stability of the city in hand. But I, we had a vote a couple of weeks ago about increasing the utility costs 5.2% this year and next year. There was one no vote on the city council. That was me. I don't agree with that type of rate hike, and so I voted no. However, I inherited the kick, the candidality, and we are dealing with it. We have infrastructure costs that we are having to deal with. And so we have cost of service studies. We're trying to go forward and make sure that we have correct cost of services that we're paying our way. We're not taking the can down the road anymore. We've really had to tighten up at City Hall. We've laid off some people. We have some smaller departments. So we're really trying to deal with the budget going forward and the lowest cost to citizens, and I'm working on that. Thank you.
Next question?
Hello, I'm Mark Ozias. I'm wondering what, if anything, do you think the city of Port Angeles should be doing to foster or encourage a more positive and more inviting environment for local businesses?
And we'll start with Ms. Smith.
Well, I've had two downtown businesses. Both failed. But I know their content drives traffic. And the one thing that we have lost over the last 15 years are some vibrant festivals, a lot of parades. We used to have some great parades which brought people out. Now we have a Fourth of July parade that's to be better. When we move the farmers market out of downtown, that was a detriment to the downtown. I'd like to see the farmers market for the summer months go back to Laurel Street. I think that's fantastic. What we need to do is really decide who we are as a town and have one vision and work with that.
Next is Ms. Kid?
Well, the waterfront is important, and it's changed the face of not only Port Angeles, we're an international host city. So we're welcoming people to Port Angeles, to Ploton County, and to the United States of America. And we're doing that for various reasons, and one is to help draw in private investment to our downtown if we dress up over waterfront. We are courting private investors to come into Port Angeles as well as helping the local businesses, encourage locals. Several businesses are opening by chair of the lodging tax committee, and we give funding to a lot of new programs. We had arts and drafts festivals this last weekend. That's brand new. We've expanded our waterfront parks so we can have craft festival on both sides of downtown. Waterfestival on both sides of downtown encompass the downtown. So we are really working and currently trying to recruit new businesses to Port Angeles. We need an airline, so we're working hard to get an airline in here too. Thank you.
First and foremost, when people come to town, we need to keep them here. Coming to town and just continuing on their way out to the rainforest or wherever maybe, that's great. Stay here first. And improving the waterfront, I will be sure that is an inviting sight for when people come here. It's not a bunch of old plattings and a bunch of old rotten buildings that are ready to fall into the waterfront. I believe we need diverse businesses. We need some core businesses that are diverse. Those businesses will feed smaller businesses that provide services to those folks. Having people, you know, you see a lot of outside contractors come in. They say, well, we're spending our dollars in Port Angeles. No, you're not. You're buying a few goods and services in Port Angeles. You're not spending your heavy tax dollars. You're not paying for homes. You're not paying for schools. You're leaving when it's all done. And I'd like to see these jobs stay local, and I would like to see people be able to support their families therapy for the longer.
Next question?
It is, okay. Norma Turner. And the idea of utility bills, a lot of it, there's a big cost there for CSO, and we continue to have issues of the waterfront pollution as a overflow. There was a very religious study done years ago at the city saying that rain barrels are really expensive, and they're not. So I'd like all of you to discuss, what are some simple things the city could be doing to stimulate people at their own homes to start reducing that cost of that overflow, such as rain barrels? What could you do to encourage more people to use rain barrels, et cetera?
Ms. Carter, Ms. Kid?
Thank you, Norma. We're trying to encourage conservation, and in every utility bill, there's flyers. I'm not encouraged that. We have booths at the State Fair. We are really trying to encourage people to conserve, and I think that's ongoing education, and that's something that we are doing and we need to continue to do. So thank you very much.
Ms. Smith?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Carter.
Yes.
I talked a lot.
Just checking the scene.
One side is saying we need to conserve the rain barrels. We need to be more cautious of our recycling. The other side, when you look at rain barrels, have built a couple new homes in Port Angeles. And if you want to go down to the city building department, they will inform you exactly where your downspouts will go. They will inform you exactly how they're supposed to be, either into a dry well or out into a back egress or out into the front street. They are not... I believe the building department needs to start stepping up and encouraging citizens and making recommendations for when new homes are built, that these are built and are feasible. I have a home across the street from me that is a green home. It made it about halfway there. Has no solar panels or anything. Somebody moved in, and that was the end of the, the end of the green, the green deal. It was delta. And we need to have opportunities for people to learn more about these things. I don't think citizens are involved enough. We need to learn more.
Exactly. I've been trying to get, figure out how to get permits to put in a rainwater capture system that I can use during the summers to irrigate my plants. It's not easy. There's a lot of tangled little concepts. They're very difficult to get around. Of course, I also have to put on a tin roof because you can't use a shake roof to capture your water. I've learned a lot about this lately. You know, eventually I want to have solar panels and all that. I don't see a lot of really great incentive programs running this. I also don't see a lot of really great incentive programs for planting more trees, which certainly not. I mean, a lot, someone was telling me the lawn civic field, that there used to be trees that sucked a lot of the water. Of course, they did. You know, why don't we put trees back? That's, you know, I think there, there's a lot more we can do as a community to help our community.
We'll start with that.
Do we have another question?
Darlene Campbell. One of the worst things that has happened financially to the city is allowing the lives who are overcooked to be... Costing everybody millions of unnecessary dollars. Now it's overcoats going into water, and what is happening to our beaches and our sand is the backhoe and all that sewage and poison, contaminants, the sand, and people recreate in it, and they are being poisoned. What will you do? Investigate the beach or... To do a serious investigation of the contaminants in there and warn people when they're walking in and recreating.
And we'll start with Mr. Meredith.
We need to clean up the harbor. The CSO should have been dealt with years ago. The sign down on Hollywood Beach that says, "This water is contaminated in the middle of summer", that looks great for tourists. That would be good here. That needs to, it needs to be looked at. I've noticed the city still is unsure exactly where that's coming from. And is it a city problem or is it a problem of industry? Is there somebody else that's polluting into that water? And it needs to be looked at. You will not cure the problem if it keeps coming back. That's, it's just going to be there all the time, and that's not, doesn't look good. Doesn't look good on us, and we need to be positive. We need to encourage people to be out, to be out downtown and to be enjoying the great area we have, the waterfront, the mountains. You just can't, there's not many places around here you have. And a lot of people, that's the first thing they notice, is what we gave for rent.
Well, I, my business was in the Harber Town Hall, and that's the one that's the lowest one in Lincoln Street. And I know that during the, we had the rain season, we ended up getting sewage coming out into the basement of the building, which was... out into the basement of the building, which was lovely when young I was around. I complained constantly, because that seems to be my habit. And I was told, "No, there's nothing we can do." But clearly, there's some disconnect, there's something wrong with the sewer system. I was told it wasn't mapped properly, but I don't know. You know, it's an engineering problem, clearly. There's no reason that we should be getting E. coli and other bacteria at the harbor. You know, if it's coming through the strings, that's one issue. If it's coming through the sewer leakage in that area, that's another. I'd love to hear that, that's going to be declared. And, you know, research is the best I can do.
Thank you, Darling, and good to see you again. I want clean beaches. We need them. We, we need to have a pristine community. We're so beautiful. We're paradise. We need our beaches open and clean. That's, our CSO project is, is underway. It's, it's the biggest can, kick the can, game of kick the can I've ever seen, and I have heard of it. And it should have been started years ago, before I was on the council. But now, we're taking the goal by the horns, we're actually, we're actually taking care of it. And it's a huge project, as we've seen all that construction. But it's important that we have clean beaches. We need to research and find out exactly what's happening, and how, how we can't have clean beaches year-round. And I know we're working on that goal. It isn't, obviously, engineering issues, but it's something that I know we've been focused on, I know we're getting better, and I will absolutely be checking into that. Thank you so much for your question.
Next.
Hi, I'm Ed Chad, and I'd like to ask you a question about downtown. Kind of several things about downtown. First of all, how important do you think downtown is to the health of our city? And what would be the most important things you think going forward that the city could do to help downtown flourish?
All right, can we start with Ms. Kim?
Okay. That's a big question. Downtown flourish. Okay, I really am a big fan of festivals, and I think all summer, we could have festivals every weekend. I'd like to see a giant car show, that's all the car shows that are here, scheduled for one weekend, and do a big cruise, kind of like Hudson, August Nights does in Reno, because that was a small thing when it started. We have opportunity for a lot, to bring in a lot of diverse crowds. As I said, content drives traffic, so you have to have something there for people to want to come in. We don't have near enough retailers, especially for really small businesses. All of our retailers are these big places that were legacy buildings. They need to get broken down, or some new construction needs to take place, and you have to do retailing too. Because right now, it's really hard for really small businesses to get their foot in the ground without really high rent. The other thing is, there's, a lot of those downtown businesses need some attention.
Problem?
Good question. I'll answer it.
Yes, part one is critical to Port Angeles. We, you come into Port Angeles, there's our downtown. We're having far more festivals, and we're encouraging more festivals, not just the summertime. We do have a cruise in, we do have car shows. Our Heritage Weekend, we have a huge car show downtown. We're on Del Amal, they have their annual car show. We, we are encouraging more festivals, we are encouraging recruiting more businesses. We have many new restaurants opening that are fantastic. We have a city design program for ten thousand dollars. We will, city will grant that to many new businesses fixing up the front of their building. It's happened on, on Front Street, it's up Fitness West, it's happened at Colonel Hudson's, it's happened too. All around town, we have a ten thousand dollar grant to help you fix up your business. We're working with the downtown association, we're working with the businesses. We need a vibrant downtown, and we need to do everything we can.
Downtown supports the community, and it's a place where people can get together. That's why those festivals are downtown. When I was a kid, downtown was huge. There were people everywhere downtown. The storefronts were full, businesses were full. I didn't know where we were going. Now, you, when you have a festival downtown, it's the same as when you have a cruise ship come to downtown. Often, I see people looking around, yeah, they enjoy the waterfront, it's great, and then they move into downtown, and you see them kind of looking around like, "What is here?" And, again, downtown needs some diverse businesses. And you hear about heavy-handed pawn shops slash antique stores. Those are great, too. We need to fill those businesses up. We need people, when they go from one store, they go into the next, not when they look in the window, "Oh, I'm building, I'm building." It needs to be the heart of our community. The roads feed in there, the ferries feed in there, the planes are flying over. You need to see stuff going on, and that's, that's important.
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, we'll move to our closing statements. We'll have to, yeah. Another question? Or is there one?
So, I realize it's really difficult in a forum where you only have a minute to answer questions, to really get into the complexity of things. But the issues, many of the issues we've been talking about are really complex. And the question I have is, to what extent does a public official have a responsibility to really dig into the complexity, number one? And number two, really be honest in describing the complexity to the citizen, even when it's uncomfortable to do so?
And we'll start with Ms. Kim.
I, I'm elected for a four-year term, and asking you both for another four-year term. But I work many, especially as mayor, seven days a week. Now, I don't have to, but to me, to fulfill my promise to the people of Port Angeles, and it's, I feel obligated that, that I need to really work at this. This is not a hard-time job for me. I work every day at the council, being a council member. We have many complex issues. When the, when the dams came out, I was mayor, and that silt just clogged up the water treatment plant, that was an issue. There are many complex issues. So you have to elect people that are going to put in the time and put in the work to work for this community. So it's important, every voter here, elect the people that do the work, that do the work. Thank you.
Ms. Mary.
Government needs to be more attentive to people. And in order to be more attentive to people, you have to be honest with people. You can't continue to sugarcoat everything that happens. You also have to present ideas in a positive manner, and come up with solutions that will work. Sure, we talked about kicking the can. There can't be any more kicking the can. We need to deal with the problems and get the city back in shape. Having the city in shape will bring people here, will bring businesses here. Nobody wants to get real excited about coming to a city where there's huge, huge amounts of debt, or there are heavy-handed fees. It's like with the harbor, it's going to cost some money. We have to get it done. CSO project, it's going to cost some money. It has to be done. There's no, you can sit there and pour hours' gold milk all day long, and we have to do it. And that's the reality of being the governor, is you have to make those decisions, even if it's not optimal.
Okay, I, what I see as a disconnect in this town, where the city council does whatever they do, and the people complain, and feel frustrated, and don't voice what their feelings are. I don't see that we have enough town hall meetings. I don't see that we have enough of the various groups that rule this area to get together, to work together. Because I'd love to see that the court and the city council actually communicate in a form that I can go watch. I'd like to see people speak up and come out, and feel like they can be listened to. Because I don't think people need representatives to make decisions for them. I think people have the ability to make decisions, or at least weigh in. And I imagine I've been very frustrated with this town all along. I feel like people go, "Well, that's just the way it is." And I don't think so.
All right. It's a sign. Let's move to our closing statements, up to one minute each. We'll go in reverse order, so we'll start with Ms. Kim.
Okay. I'm a researcher, I'm a waiter. I'm a published author. I don't do, speaking is not easy for me. You know, I'm a really good-minded type, I have a word processor, but I'm, speaking is hard, because I like to ponder things, and listen, and try to get a real feel for what other options there are. Which is why, you know, I talked about, you know, private-public partnerships, because I've seen a lot of that. You know, I'd like to get Alice Waters here with her, with her urban, with her vegetable growing in the schools. You know, I'd like to see healthy community things happen. I'd like to see some events that we have, like Block, you know, close off downtown and just have a Fourth of July to, for people to be envious of. I never think, I work all the time, I work sixty hours a week on average, I've been self-employed for thirty years. I don't see this work. You know, I think we can pull together and really have a community.
And now, my question.
Look, we need to bring city council to people, and we need to bring people into city council. And that means not two or three people sitting at the city council meetings, that's essentially just a city council, but they're doing government, that's not people participating in government. The issues that are surrounding the government, when I go to these meetings, there's kind of a calm period, and then, I'm not sure that people feel like they're hurt, there's head nods, there's not a lot of interaction with people. And I don't know if it's people just don't care, or people don't want to be there. People need to start caring. People need to start being in their community, they need to know their neighbors, and they need to be active. And there's only one way to be active, and that's to stand up and do something. Don't sit there and complain about something you don't like. I work on a lot, and I always give everything a hundred percent. My plan on doing that is at council.
It's such an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Port Angeles. I have gotten to know so many people in our community, and I can honestly say, I'm proud of the work that I've done. Things are better off now than they were when I started. I, we're not, this council's not kicking the can down the road, I'm doing that, but we've had to catch a bunch that worked and landed in our laps, and we're taking care of it. But I work hard, I listen to the people, I respond, I'm out there in the community. I've taken my retirement funds and invested in a business in Port Angeles. I invest in Port Angeles, I'm here, I, every ribbon-cutting, every new business, I, I, everything I'm invited to, I'm there with the people. You know me, people trust me, I'm working for the people of Port Angeles. Thank you for your trust, and I hope I can continue to represent you. I'm here tonight, my opponent isn't. I ask for your vote, your work, and for you.
Thank you, candidates. Let's go to the round.